Welcome to our meeting order and welcome everybody to our February school board meeting. Uh, first item we had need to prove the agenda, so if you'll take a look at that and see if anybody has any additions or changes, but you know, if not, I'm going to take a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Second.
That motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. They're one of the stands for pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, next on our agenda, we have the board minutes from our January 4th meeting. Uh, those are previously submitted to you. If you had a chance to look those, if not, take a look and listen to them. We have any additions or deletions and I can take a caution whenever you're ready.
Would that be approved?
Second.
No motion second to approve the minutes. We'll discuss it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, uh, next we have the January dispersments that were also into you. Take a look at those. I know there was a large one in there for Lincoln County for kind of two thousand on Capitol, but is it even the?
That's track.
That's track, that's okay.
Ninety-four five. And the carpet, do we put carpet in some classrooms or what do we new flooring somewhere?
Sandy, where is that? I can't think of that.
It's on a Capitol.
I think that is correct.
Carpet in classrooms or where do we put carpet somewhere?
That's a great question.
Okay, we need flooring.
For flooring, it's a big.
It was in the cla- I'm sure it was in the classroom, but I, uh, that, wait a minute, that is going to be in the portals.
Um, where the, where the.
Yeah, you know, we've had some flood damage. Uh, they're the gift that keeps on giving at this point in time, but we do have to repair them, so that's where, that's the, is that correct?
There, there's a high school library.
Okay.
And middle school cafeteria ramp, the nice carpet. Is that the one that you're asking about?
They just said nice carpet.
We're doing a few things at the, in the library. Uh, Ms. Hill is doing a really nice job.
And Howard Technology Solutions. Is that some one I say often?
What does that mean?
It's on with the general education dispersments for thirty-two, thirty-two, five. Chromebooks.
Chrome, uh, that is the Chromebook grant.
So we get, we'll get reimbursed for that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Would that be approved?
Can I vote you a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. Alright, we'll move on. The principals are forward. Dr. Styles?
Coming. How are you guys doing? It's good to see you guys. Well, I guess you want to know what's happening at Ralph Askins. We just finished our hundred day of school on Friday, so all the children were involved in a lot of activities where they were counting a hundred pennies and, and Fruit Loops and all the fun stuff that goes along with a hundred days. And then we also had, we just finished our awards day celebration, and that's always fun. But we have a group of teachers who come together and they've, they're assigned to deciding what the awards day is going to look like. And so, you know, this year we don't have a lot of money and we, they, they came up with the neatest idea. They bought these balloons and filled them with confetti and then, um, Lee Ellen and I were the lucky ones that got to go into the classrooms and then we also brought them into the lunchroom. And we, we said for our standout student awards, we, um, popped the balloon over their heads and the confetti flew. And I thought it was the best idea, so I brought a couple of pictures of our students enjoying the confetti. And some of them were a little timid about having the balloon popped over their head, but then once the confetti fell, they were just all excited. And let's see. Oh, this little guy was funny. He was just loving life. But it was fun celebrating that. And then, of course, we celebrated our, our honor roll award recipients. And our standout student awards, that's one person per classroom, so they will also get cahoots catered in and that's, you'll need to join us for that too if you can.
I got to join them at the time before. That is absolutely great.
Yeah, yeah, they love that, getting to eat chicken fingers and fries. Um, let's see, something else I was going to tell you that we just completed, the awards day and our hundred day.
Talk us about the parent teacher conference. Did that all went well?
Oh, yeah, that was very good. Um, in the first parent teacher conference we had, we did a training session and we, we provided different, you know, parent conference, parent training sessions with that throughout the building. And this time we just did the conferences and the teachers had more of the data, so they were able to go over all the data with the parents and that's always beneficial. So we, we did have a good turnout for that. Um, and then we just finished a, um, survey that we're putting out to all of our virtual families because we, we want to get input from them. How's it going? How's the technology? How is the, the instruction? And, um, so we're kind of eager to get that information back from our parents to see, you know, that's something we haven't done, has been able to survey our parents yet. And, um, there's something else I want, I should have written it down. Oh, with our kindergarten, um, we're, we're, our teachers don't like the word SWAT, so I'm going to change it. But I, I said we got a SWAT team coming in, but we're going to use, they don't like that word. They don't like it, so I'm, I'm having to think of another term. But anyway, it is, I have, I have fourteen, fourteen adults that work at our school and I thought, you know what? They can give thirty minutes of their time in their schedule, so we, we figure out, and I'm included, Dr. Carter's included. And we're just going to storm the kindergarten classes one day a week for thirty minutes, just the first thirty minutes, and we're, we're going over letter sound fluency. We want to get that, that up there, um, and improve that area. And so I thought we can all, and the kindergarten teachers are real excited about it, you know, they're loving having the hands. So that will put three people, three to four adults in each class for thirty minutes. And then we're trying to work on a way to maybe use the high school students to come in too and to help with that because they, we have the mentoring program. But we're being, we may have to be creative with that, but yeah, that's it. That's what's going on, so, yeah, it's, it's all good. We've had a little, a few deaths in our, um, family, faculty, family. And so that's, um, you know, Ms. Melody just lost her, her dad and Legia lost her grandmother. So anyway, that's, that's been kind of hard on us, you know, but, um, our faculty's great. Everybody pulls together and supports and that's what it's all about, so. But thank you for letting me share. Any questions?
Quick question. Has COVID pretty much just killed for the time being the era of, of volunteers coming in to help with the reading and, you know, kind of the traditional things we used to see?
Yes.
Has it just pretty much decimated them?
Right now it has. And in our parent involvement, you know, I talked to a group of teachers today and we miss, we miss programs. Like we wanted to put on a dance at the end of last year and that, that fizzled out. And we just, we, we look forward to the day we can start that again because right now it's, you know, just, I don't know, at some point we may, we may all, I, I just recovered from COVID. And so we may all get it and we're, we're all good, or we'll get the vaccination and we'll all be good, but right now it's still, it's still a little.
Yes, some that want to read are our, uh, most at risk individuals. That'd be sad.
Yeah. And our grandmas, you know, we have, we have grannies that help us and they, they, there was about two or three weeks they couldn't, they couldn't come in because of the numbers, so.
But they are.
They're back. They're back. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. We have, I had texted, uh, Ms. Hopkins and, and our chairman earlier today about, you know, there are opportunities to nominate a volunteer for volunteer of the year through TSBA to be recognized.
Yeah.
As the South Central District Volunteer of, of the Year. And that's, um, all, and there are other awards and some of those awards literally last year had no nominations. I think COVID had everybody just thrown completely off their game.
Yeah.
And there were districts across the state that didn't even have a nominee.
Right.
What a shame.
It is.
Because I know we must have great volunteers.
Yes.
I mean, if they're working with us through COVID, they are really diehard supporters of the children.
This is true.
We should have nominations for all, all the awards this time. I, I copied my, the text and sent it to myself in an email and I'm going to talk, Monday we're going to talk about it.
Okay. Yeah, but we look forward to having our parents and our families back involved in the school. We really do. Alright, thank you. I appreciate it.
Is Ms. Dean out there?
Now, if y'all noticed, we actually, we actually have this, uh, bit, a Google meet so that some of the supervisors can watch it from the office. So they can hear because they're not able to hear what's going on. They'd like to hear that, so that's the purpose of that right there. They're able to engage with us and they really can't do that when they're sitting in the halls.
Hi, how are y'all? Uh, I wanted to start out by letting you guys know how appreciative my teachers are of this virtual Wednesday. Um, they have worked and worked and worked and they wanted to say thank you very much. They're looking forward to being able to touch base with their virtual students. Our numbers are still right where they were last month, twenty-one in fifth grade. We've still got thirty in sixth, twenty-two in seventh and thirty-two in eighth. Um, so, um, I sent out a message this afternoon to all parents. We are highly encouraging all virtual students to come in for an hour. We've got fifth and sixth graders that we want to come from nine to ten and seventh and eighth from ten to eleven, so the teachers can be there just to lay eyes on them, touch base with them. It's not mandatory, but we are highly encouraging that for every Wednesday for the next, uh, month. So hopefully we'll have a good turnout with that. It gives them time to contact those students, reach out and just have a more of a one-on-one conversation with them. So they are very thankful for that time. Um, also, um, I heard Dr. Styles kind of talk about their rewards. We did our mid-year benchmark, um, after Christmas returning and, um, the administrators, we spent time with each individual student, calling them in and discussing their scores of where they were at the beginning of the year, where they were mid-year. The growth they made, maybe the lack of, how we could work on that. That seemed to leave a really good impression with kids, a lot of parents talking and they've kind of stopped us and said, you know, the teachers appreciate that. My child appreciated knowing that they had grown from, you know, two grade levels, three grade levels. It was a very good conversation, a one-on-one time that they don't get to have with us. Um, so we enjoyed that. Um, we gave ice cream for the kids that had growth and then we gave a pizza party for the kids that were at grade level or above, so we had lunch with them. Uh, exciting news, tonight our boys are playing at seven o'clock at Lincoln County High School in the semifinals. We are playing Hall and Rim, so we're kind of a dueling battle here. We won, then we lost. Then we went to the first round of tournaments and we lost to them, so tonight is a big game, so we would love for y'all to come out. Um, everyone is welcome. You know, they've lifted the band. So, um, we did a little walk through pep rally in the hallways this afternoon to encourage them. The drummers came over from the high school cheerleaders. Um, they were, the boys are really excited about that, so.
And I will say, the crowds have been really good.
Yes.
For the middle school games, even with the COVID is, uh, I was talking to the high school principal for Lincoln County, because that's where it was at. And that was the first comment he made to me was, wow, how impressive your fans are and the number of parents and you have to kind of watch your children play. I mean, that was the very first thing he noticed. So that, that says a lot for our system.
So, yeah, we're excited tonight. We've got extra pom poms to give out and get a really, um, so if they win tonight, they'll play Thursday night. They win Thursday night, then they will go on to play in the state playoffs. So tonight's a big night. As I said, we've kind of been back and forth, back and forth, so, um, we hope for a good turnout tonight. So if y'all can come out and support us at seven o'clock, that'd be great. So, alright, any questions or?
Thank you, everyone, for listening.
Sure, we're happy to. Y'all are welcome anytime.
Videos were awesome.
Okay, we will, we will. We had fun with those, so the teachers are very creative and, you know, you give them a little hint and they go with it. That's all I love about my staff. They do. They're, they're great sportsmanship and they just hang right in there and love to have fun too, so. Alright, good deal. Alright.
This guy just followed me and I figured it was okay if he, you know, I didn't, I didn't have the heart to tell him he couldn't come. Uh, we do have Coach Keys with us tonight. He, he was just itching to come to a board meeting, so I thought, you know, we'll, we'll give him a shot. I'm, I'm going to let him close it out. He's, uh, going to talk a little bit about the GM. I know you guys are interested to hear kind of where we're at on some of that, so I'm going to let him close us out with that. But, um, at the high school right now, obviously we've still got basketball. We're trying to finish up the regular season. Uh, fortunately for us, the governor's ban got lifted, so we're going to revert back to our pre-COVID, before he locked us down with the restrictions. We're going to go back to what we were doing before, so most of you probably saw it on Facebook today, three hundred tickets. Uh, the link will go out, uh, Friday morning. Uh, we're excited that the cheerleaders can actually come now, so they're going to be running two squads to hopefully create some spacing on the side. So they'll basically flip-flop, so one group will cheer girls' game. They'll all perform together at halftime, then we'll swap the other bunch out for the boys. And we'll just kind of work that, uh, and see how that goes. So super excited, especially, uh, to be able to close the season out with more like what it should be. Uh, those of you that have had the opportunity, it's eerily quiet in there, like it's, it's not like anything we've ever, ever experienced before. So excited to have all those people back. Uh, also.
It's a great game.
Absolutely. Yeah, great game. Um, and, uh, so we got FFA week going on, the week of the twenty-second through the twenty-seventh. Uh, they're going to be doing some COVID-related stuff. Uh, they're going to be making some ag education videos that they're going to send out to Ralph Askins. Uh, we're actually going to send them to RCA as well. Uh, Ms. Fritz, I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to meet her. She took, uh, Ms. Madison's spot when she left. She has some ties with RCA, so we're working, you know, she's still trying to kind of coordinate some of that with them. And we actually have some students that co-op with our FFA program, uh, from RCA as part-time students. So, you know, we're certainly trying to, to help those guys out. Uh, also, and as I was looking at it, I didn't really do a great job of reading it at first, but they have a dress-up day on Tuesday that says Dress Up As A Teacher Day. So I'm interested to see, you know, they say emulation is the highest form of flattery. I, I don't know, we'll, we'll have to see, see how that goes. Uh, but they're also going to provide breakfast for the teachers that morning, so it'll be come and go. Uh, it starts at seven-twenty. You guys are more than welcome to stop by if you want to grab something to eat and see what those guys have going on. We'd love to have you. Um, and like I said, that'll be Tuesday morning. Uh, Wednesday and Thursday, they're just going to kind of be wrapping up the rest of the week's activities. Um, they're going to have like a game night.
Tomorrow?
Or, uh, the week of the twenty-second, so twenty-third, I believe, if my dates are right. Yeah, FFA week's twenty-second through the twenty-seventh. So, uh, and then, uh, Friday, they're going to be wrapping up with their service project, uh, and they're in the midst of kind of collecting stuff for the animal shelter to kind of help them out. Um, and, um, they're also got their strawberry fundraiser going on as well, so if you want to get the jump on early spring strawberries, uh, find an FFA member, I'm sure they'd love to, love to hook you up with them. Uh, but that's kind of all I have, enrollment numbers. We're at three sixty-one. We've actually picked up a few kids, uh, after the Christmas break. Uh, we have a hundred and fifteen that are virtual and two hundred and forty-six that are coming to the building. So, you know, about what we've seen for the most part, uh, but good that we're still picking up kids. Uh, Coach had a very good meeting with our TEMA representatives, so I'm going to kind of let him take over and he can kind of tell you some things they talked about last week.
Um, yeah, alright, so I'll kind of give you guys a broad overview and then if you have questions, I'll try to have us to answer that. Basic idea is that we have been awarded a FEMA grant to build a tornado safe room, which can also function as a gym. So it's going to be rated up to F-five tornadoes and it'll be open, you know, for the community and stuff as well. It'll be on campus, so if there's ever an event during school, we can just move our kids into that. And any pep rally we have can be a double dipper. It can be a pep rally and also be a, uh, a, uh, a tornado drill. Because you're, because you're, you're shaking boxes everywhere.
Wow!
Once we get past COVID. Um, these things are pretty awesome. Um, I got into this process last year. Um, as far as me and Mr. Jones worked on the application, it was about an eighty-page application. And as I was, we're working the application, I was starting to see some of the, some of the great benefits. These things are big out west, like Oklahoma, uh, Mississippi's where my contacts are now. I've got to talk to and meet some amazing people through this journey that have really helped me out tremendously, uh, just to give us free information basically. Uh, basic idea is they're super safe. They are, I mean, like I said, F-five rated. It's just a big concrete dome. It's something like you've never seen before, uh, as far as what, you know, if, if some of you guys have been to North and South Middle Schools in Winchester, same idea, but those are not safe rooms. Those are just, they're, they're, they're just ground places. So this is going to be, they're, it's a dome and it's literally just a concrete dome. So it's, it's super structurally safe. Um, it's also very green, very energy efficient. A lot of people are building these on the FEMA grants, which is kind of what we're rolling with. It's a seventy-five, twenty-five grant where they pick up seventy-five percent, we pick up twenty-five. I think Mr. Hopkins has sent you guys the email we got. Uh, it's like a five million dollar grant of ways they pay about four, we pay about one. So it's pretty, pretty fair deal on that. And, uh, they, uh, it's super energy efficient. People are using these, they're building schools out of them. So instead of just building a traditional school, they put five or six of these together in pods and, 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 you know, you think about Oklahoma, some of these tornado hotspots, the kids are always in a safe place. Um, communities use them, you know, after hours usually, but they're super, super green. That's one thing that I learned. Um, they, the, the stats I've seen are between, they pay for themselves in energy efficiency within fifteen to twenty years. So a lot of places are building these now. They're ducking what we're dealing with. We're dealing with the red tape, the bureaucratic stuff. When I got into this process, I kept asking everybody I talked to, I said, where's the problem? This sounds too good to be true. There's no way the government's going to give us all this money to build this thing. We get to reap the benefits. And I said, you know, somebody please tell me what's wrong with it. The only thing I got was that the red tape, the bureaucracy of it. For example, you know, we found out, I got the call June first, basically that, hey, this thing's good. We're good to go. And from June first to the end of the year before we actually got the paperwork. And that's part of that bureaucratic stuff where it has to check all these boxes, it has to hit all this, um, you know, the way I understand it is so many people had to sign off on it. So even though we had the preliminary, go, you're good to go, we didn't get the official paperwork till just the other day. Um, we had a great call, I think it was last Tuesday or Wednesday, uh, made a great contact with the TEMA, the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency. Um, Kay Cochran, she's helped out tremendously with this. And we're in the process now of figuring out how to correctly hire the people to get this thing built. A project manager, architect, construction company, because we have to do it to their specifications for them to pay for it. So we got to know the exact ins and outs of it. Um, I was actually on the phone on the way up here with a principal from, uh, East Webster, Mississippi, trying to get their paperwork. Basically, hey, tell us what you did. How did you guys go about getting this done correctly? Because we're going to have the first one in Tennessee. Nobody else has this in Tennessee. The people at TEMA are super excited because one of her comments to me was, when I first started this journey, was that there's so much money for these things, but nobody knows how to use them. So it's the idea that she wants to use us as the showpiece for the rest of the state. She's already said multiple times, hey, can we bring other schools in? When this thing's done, can we bring other people in and, and show them what we can do? No doubt. You help us, no doubt. Well, well, we're all about that. Um, these things last forever. Uh, they talk about not just lasting decades, but centuries. Very easy to maintain. Um, I mean, I could go on and on with, with some of the why it's so good, um, why it's so great. Um.
The two things that we, that you talked about that they, number one, the most important thing we need to do right now is through RFP or construction management, is what they told us to get that started.
Mm-hmm.
And so we've got to create that and that's what he's in the process of doing.
Yeah.
And then when we create it, we have to send it to TEMA. And then once they bless it, we can then put the RFP out, but it's, it's, we've got to be created, then they've got to kind of bless it. So it is a process. I mean, it's going to be a long process, I would imagine.
Yeah, and my understanding, it's a lot of that with everything. It's kind of, we decide what we need, we decide kind of how we want to write it, then we send it for the blessing, then once we get it back, we can actually move on.
Yeah, and I think once we actually get started with it, it only takes about eighteen months to build, they said, from, from beginning to, to end. So it's like, once you get past this, once we figure out how to hire the people we need to hire and do it the correct way, then, you know, you're looking at, when they break ground, eighteen months and, and you're in the thing. Because it's literally, and I mean, I can send you guys videos off, there's videos on YouTube. It's a, it's a concrete, it's a big dome and they spray shot creek and, and steel rebar, yeah. And they spray it up there. They actually have, before they get to that point, they inflate, uh, like it's a, some kind of plastic, some kind of high, high, you know, high, high industry grade. And they, they actually like hook fans up and they inflate the thing like a balloon and then they put the, the shot creek and stuff there. So it's, that's a really neat process in itself. But, uh, I think that once we actually get everything going, get the people hired that we need to hire, then I think that you would say that it's going to move on a little bit faster. I've already said, the TEMA's already said they're not going to throw curveballs at us. They're here to help us. Uh, the contacts I made in Mississippi said that they, when they built theirs, that, that, they didn't have many problems from FEMA as far as getting the stuff done. Their problems were with Mississippi's emergency management throwing them curveballs because I think so many schools started building them so fast, they had to wrangle back on that. Because there were so many schools doing it, um, in Mississippi.
And they did give permission now to publicize.
She said we're good to go.
They should have known about it, but we really not, not had permission to do an article or to do that. But Coach asked that specifically and she explained, yes, that we, she was very proud that we had waited. She gave some examples of how other people have gotten ahead of that and that we should not have.
Yeah, and that's, it kind of, it kind of felt like I kept getting these unofficial yeses, like unofficially, you've got it. You know, I can't get you the paperwork yet, so I kept waiting for this paperwork to come in. It's like, no, are you pulling, what's going on here? And so, and, and I got, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to just blow up the, you know, and, and call the lady at TEMA every day, but I was like, I kind of want to call her every day and see when we're going to get this thing. And so she was super excited, called me on my cell phone. It was actually, I think, a day we were out for snow and I was on, I was on a COVID quarantine. And my phone rings and I was like, I hope this is great news. She's like, it's official. You guys got it. The email's on its way. She said, I'm cleaning it up as we speak. And, uh, it's, it's, everything is good to go. So there, there's no, you know, we've got it. Now we just got to figure out how to build it. Um, questions? I know if they're a lot at you right there real fast.
I just want to say huge thanks. Like, I know you had forged your heart and soul, but you've gone above and beyond.
It's crazy, yeah.
What, you were supposed, you, this is, you have put, I mean, everybody all have, but I know you've kind of been spearheading it and I think, just thank you.
Well, I appreciate it and then I think it is a great thing for the school and the community. I kind of, the quick background on how I kind of got started with this, we were meeting with architects, talking. I kind of, the quick background on how I kind of got started with this, we were meeting with architects, talking about renovating our gym now. And, you know, we need, we don't, we need facilities. We don't have great facilities. It's, I mean, they're in great shape for what they are, but they're not high school facilities. You know, our locker rooms, that's not a good situation. We can't host the district tournament because we don't have enough seats. And they started talking about how many millions of dollars it was going to cost to renovate the gym. And it's still what we need. And I was just, I was depressed. Like I sat down in my chair and I just was like, I was like, what are we going to do? And I just, in the back of my mind, a buddy of mine that coaches in Alabama had said, he had heard about us maybe renovating gym. Said, hey, you need to check out this gym in Alabama. They got it on a grant. I just discarded it. I said, there's no way. Like, you know, it sounds too good to be true. It's not true, can't be true. And I just sat there and was like, I'm going to call. And I literally, it was like four o'clock in the afternoon, started calling people. And I started calling, I called Sulligent Alabama, talked to their principal and their director of schools that day. Called, uh, Mississippi, talked to principals, talked to two different principals and, uh, current director of schools and a former director of schools. And it's like six o'clock, my wife's calling me, she's mad, where are you at? She's like, you have gone, you just ghosted me. She had no clue. And I said, cause I, I, once it started, it was like snowball. And I started talking to all these people. And then, you know, they said, well, next step, I said, they said, call TEMA, call your grant, your local, you know, the emergency management. And I started calling and they were like, no, I don't think you can do that. And ladies like, I'm not going to tell you that. Let me pass, and they passed me on to four or five people. And I finally got somebody and she said, yes. She said, I think that's right. She said, but not me, I can't help you, but I know who can. And I was like, all right, she said, but she's not in the office, be back next week. She's like, she, but she gave me the contact and so I, I emailed her and she was at the, and the lady emailed me right back, Ms. Carrie. And she said, yes, she said, as soon as I get back in the office, I'll get with you. This is, because I didn't, I didn't tell him, I hadn't told anybody. Like I didn't want to be a fool and be like, you know, hey, I've got, you know, and then come find out, there's no way it's possible.
I've got four million dollars.
Yeah, exactly. I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, I'm a, I'm a first year administrator there. I'm not going to be that guy. Like, hey, I think I got this for me, but I'm not sure. So I was like, look, I said, I haven't told anybody, but I'm going to take this up chain of command. Because, you know, this is, you know, above my pay grade, obviously. And I said, is it, is it, she said, yes. She said, you need to start talking to people right now because I'm going to help you, we're going to get this done. And she was excited, she's been, I mean, I, you know.
I think that's how things get done.
You know, just, we just kept, I just.
I say, you've got to be a bulldog.
Kept calling and calling and calling and finally got the answers I wanted.
Yeah.
Um. I do have a, a quick question. And this doesn't relate so much, I, I realize we can't get into too many details here, but there's, this is really kind of a two-part simultaneous construction, right? On the one hand, you've got the shelter, which is being, is the subject of the grant.
Yes, the safe room is the subject of the grant.
We're trying to then as much simultaneously as we can slide this gym build out into that.
The.
Do you, you may not at this point have a real feel for, how much does the, I mean, you, you know, FEMA wants a shelter, they can't just build a concrete bubble.
Yeah.
Away, there's a certain amount of build out that's part of that to, right? I mean.
Exactly right.
Some things are restrooms kind of generally included.
Yes, now they're.
Certain degree.
They don't care what we actually make it into. It could be a library, it could be a gym, it could be a cafeteria, it could be classrooms. What they want to make sure is it's built to their specifications, that it's built to the FEMA three sixty-one manual of how to, you know, make it, which is a concrete dome. So it, I think it just naturally makes it good. They cover everything from plumbing to electrical, all that can be included in there. Now what's, how you finish it out is on you. They don't care if it's just an empty shell with bathrooms and power that people can go into, you know? And so, so we, from there, then we have to finish it to our, to what we want. So included in that is the, you know, the groundbreaking, all that stuff, everything construction related, plumbing, electrical, AC. All that stuff is included in that grant. And what they did was we talked to, uh, an architect from Mississippi that has built several of these and kind of worked in conjunction with him to, uh, he had way more experience and way more knowledge to how they did it. But they used kind of a formula of how many people in a short, like seven minutes, they gave a specific amount of time, could be from where they were to our gym. And that formula based then turned into how many square feet you would be allotted. And so I'm thinking that off the top of my head, twenty-one, twenty-two thousand square feet is what we're allotted. So we didn't just get to design this thing. They said, all right, here's the size it can be. And when you look at, uh, other gyms of the, of the sort, for example, you know, a thousand seats is very important to us for basketball to host a district tournament. There's a gym in East, what the principal was just talking to, in East Webster, Mississippi, that has almost the exact same size. I think there's a little bit smaller and they have a thousand and fifty.
There's like eighteen five.
Yeah, theirs was a little, I think ours is.
Architect is someone that is one that we were actually talking with and they're going to be able to make a presentation. Um, I, I think I sent you all where we were going to meet with him. I keep him to the day off the top of my head, but.
Yeah, Joey Anderson from JBHM.
Yeah. And a lot of it does come down to those specifications. You know, once, once we know exactly what we've got to have, then we can start looking at what we can do. Cause obviously there's some things when we can sit down with the architect and say, hey, can we put this here and create some space here?
Some of the, some of our. Some of them are cookie cutter. You know, there's, they're like, for example, the locker rooms and pretty much all these things are under the bleachers. So the bleachers go up, your locker rooms are under that. Now they do differ in that, you know, some of them are kind of, like you come in at the top and you go down and then they can do some different stuff. Uh, the East Webster one that is like that, and I asked him, I said, well, you know, what, talk about the capacity. I know a thousand, over a thousand seats. I said, tell me about how many people. He said fifteen, sixteen hundred for graduation. Cause that's the good thing with these too. These don't, you know, you, it's a great, you know, it's a great gym, it's a great, it's a great setting for a gym. But with a little bit of, you know, foresight, you can make this thing into an event center really. Because, you know, a lot of people, like we put down, when we have band concerts, we put down the, um, the, uh, the tarp, basically. It's a blue tarp, it doesn't look pretty. It's been to band concert. It's very functional, protects the floor, but it doesn't look pretty, no. Now people are doing, in these things especially, uh, it's like what we have in the school as far as the tile carpet. And they're removable.
Thicker with a pad and you just stack them.
You put that down and now you've got really an event center. I mean, you, you know, it doesn't, you know, you back the bleachers in, this thing, you know, there's tons of different uses for that stuff.
Works out like we think it would, it really is going to set itself up to a, 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 a second floor entrance. Which you've seen those, those are really nice gymnasiums. And they're great for the administration because they manage well, you never have to worry about people getting on the floor. It shouldn't be on the floor.
Yeah, it's great.
You know, but, but you know, that's going to be a lot of the architect and what they feel about the site. But I feel our site, based on that height, it really sets itself up to something, really, yeah.
It really, it's like, it's like a.
It sets, it sets itself up for that look.
It really, it really, it's, it's something very different.
You know, you're already sitting down anyway, so it makes it even safer than what it's already manufactured.
Yeah, you dug in that hole there.
Already dropped.
I'll pass this around. This is a picture, this is a cookie cutter picture, which they've seen several days and actually been to a few. They, uh, when I talk to people, uh, principals that have these and, and schools that have these, one of the things they talk about is the community pride in it. Because it's such a cool thing. It's, it's something so different. When you look at something like that, it doesn't look like anything else you'll see. And, and, and so, you know, we talked, we went to Smithville, Mississippi and they, and they talked about how when, when you get one of those forecasted, projected, you know, the, the big, the bad outlooks of tornadoes and stuff, hey, so the people start showing up. Hey, so the thing gets used for sure.
So do people hang up on the exterior? What, what do you?
You can see, I mean, usually the, uh, the top is, is, is pretty, is, is that color there. Uh.
I've never seen one personally, I'll be honest with you. We're going, they're going to take me.
I've, I've seen some that they, they do a brick facade.
Yeah, you can fancy them up.
Uh, and then of course the roof, I would assume, you know, there's only so much.
And it's like a vinyl tarp, yeah.
Anything like that.
And you have to clean that. They're, 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 you know, they talk about, you know, these things, they don't know the life of them because they, they're so well built that they last a very long time. They talk about centuries, they last with very minimal upkeep because again, it's concrete. So, but you do have to clean the roof. That's something we've learned from, from visiting, um, is that, is that, that it'll get like a, like a mold fungus or something because of whatever it is. And you got to, and you got to, you know, spray, you got to, there's a chemical.
More candy than pictures.
Yeah, you're going to have, you're going to have the, the Jack Daniels fungus all over, yeah. Um, but I think also it's great that these things are so energy efficient. The, the stat is around a quarter of the energy use than a normal gym. And so that's why people are building these things so frequently now without even using, um, the FEMA. And I think like, one of them is in like, uh, Wisconsin. And I don't think of Wisconsin as being a huge tornado, you know, state. But it's just so, they, they talk about, it's so, uh, the, the price point on these is so, it's so, it's so good. And then within fifteen to twenty years, it pays for itself because you save so much money energy wise. That was, I had no clue until we actually went to Sulligent's gym in Alabama. And one of their custodians was talking about that, that they, that they, it's super energy efficient. And then you think it's, it's basically a cooler, you know, it's just a big concrete dome. So, and it's, you know, reinforced concrete, so it ain't like it just, you know, it's, it's crazy hard to heat or cool. And they have, they use those huge fans, if you've seen some of those, that like thirty foot, like helicopter blades to, to move air in those. Um, ton, there's tons of stuff you can do with it. There are tons of options. And at the end of the day, you get something that is great for the school and community. It's, and, like, it's rated up to F five tornadoes. So, you know, worst case scenario, I can think of a situation a few years ago where we had like literally ten minutes. Like, I don't know if you know, right now, we put our kids in the bathrooms in the gym. And, and it's just not a great situation for anybody. There's no airflow, you know, and we were in there for about an hour that day. We, you know, we, you get a few minutes, hey, we got over that, we could get to somewhere like this real fast. And then it's a way better situation.
I've got a question. Uh, Mr. Hopkins, would you allow one or both of them that could get loose? But either come to our work session or our board meeting and give us an update on this? I think our board would be very interested in this.
I agree, I think it'd be good. It really needs both of you, but you know, Mr. Keys has been the, uh, the lead person on this. So I think that would be a great idea. It, we could either come when I do my report or we can do, I guess, whenever the next one, wherever you want to go.
I would, I just said, do it, would it be better to come to? Uh, now we're filming, we're filming our work sessions and we're filming our board meetings and they're going out on the FPU and, and YouTube. Uh, I'd rather do it sooner than later.
Mr. Lynn, when's the next, uh?
We have a work session, uh, we have a work session this Thursday morning at eight o'clock downstairs in the auditorium. And the board meeting then would be the next week, the next Tuesday at five PM. But either one of them, you know, the, the work session might be the best, but, uh.
Well, I'm the guy that can excuse you from that time, so. If it pleases.
I'll get it on the agenda, I'll get it on the agenda if, um, if you can come Thursday morning at, um, let me get this, let me get this ready.
Now, what time will it start?
Eight, uh, eight o'clock.
Will we be out there by nine, you think?
We can put you first on the list.
The reason I say that is because really Thursday, the eleventh, that's when we're actually meeting with the architects.
We can put you first on the list.
We will need to be, so Coach Keys, uh, I'll come by and we'll pick you up, whatever. Or you can just, I guess I trust you coming up here, so, uh, eight o'clock, that'd be good?
Eight o'clock, yeah, this Thursday morning.
At work, so it's make that happen.
And we'll get you first on the list where you can get in and get out, I think.
No problem.
Since we can kind of get it out in the community now, good to talk about it.
Definitely. I mean, I can talk about it for a long time. That's not a problem. Like, I know you guys got to go, you're going to get home and stuff.
I was like, I'm getting hungry.
Yeah.
You might have to get a timer, I don't know if you got one.
It's exciting. It's, I, I dream of this stuff at night now, like that's, I don't, I guess my stress dreams now, my wife wakes me up because I'm talking about building dome gyms. Where your life takes you, you never know.
We've got something figured out here. See, I've, I've always been an alderman that said, well, if four votes can do anything on the board, that's why it takes four votes. So anything I've ever tried to promote, whatever, I'm, I'm just concerned about getting three more votes. I got somebody I go to now and say, hey, can you sell this to everybody?
Yeah, I think in my, my next career, I'll be a car salesman, maybe. Sell stuff, but no, this is great. Like, the more I got into this, the more I got on board, just, and the more people we talked to, that was the amazing part. Is I made, I, I can't, I've made so many great contacts with people that should never have talked to me. You know, you think about calling a director of schools at three thirty on a Tuesday, you know, he probably, but this guy took my call. And he not only said, I don't know, but I can tell you who does and gave me numbers. Um, and, and it's been amazing. I've talked to some, some awesome people that have helped that, done nothing but help. So we definitely want to repay that favor to, you know, whoever we can. I've talked to Shelby, I've already talked to Shelby County. Last year, they actually kind of piggybacked off of our stuff. And they got accepted too, but then they, they, something happened and I think they changed some stuff and it got messed up. And so they, they denied them. So we're going to be the only ones in Tennessee to get, we'll be the first and only for a while. And then, uh, it'll be, um, exciting to see, for sure. Yeah, if you have any questions, just call me. I've got YouTube videos and everything, so whatever you guys need.
Call if you've got some time.
There you go, yeah.
Best breakfast, we'll have something to eat too.
Perfect, sounds a little better. Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, there. Mr. Jones, speaking.
I answered the both. It's good to see everybody. Um, for my, uh, report, I would like to let everyone know that we have made some pretty substantial, um, improvements and, uh, gotten on quite a bit of work done on our, uh, committee, facility committee report that came out in January. So I'm pretty pleased with a lot of that. Um, without going into some of the details that would have security elements. Um, we've either fixed or ordered parts or pretty much everything is underway on those. Um, there were a couple of things that we looked at in particular, uh, at the bottom, uh, have gotten an estimate. This is our first estimate in for a basic material and installation cost on the sidewalk covers. That's what we'd refer to as awnings. Uh, so this would be the front of the building, uh, the part that goes next to the little kids', um, playground. And then the, uh, annex to the building. It would encompass all of those, uh, sidewalk covers. And installation and basic material would be about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty, depending on how we wanted to build out the big part at the little kids', um, or the pre-K, uh, play area. So that's our estimate on that. Um, we've met with a roofing specialist to try to determine a solution for us to utilize, um, in order to fix the leaks at the middle school. Um, he basically said to us that he's got a couple of ideas. Um, he wants to wait until a, a few weeks and try to catch a good time and see if we can't, uh, maybe ask a favor of the fire department or something. If they want to test some stuff and to spray the roof. Jeff was talking to him and said, uh, he can give us ideas, but it'd be better if we could basically flood the roof. And so we may try to do that at some point. So, um, uh, once he sees what's happening, he can give us the best stuff. And then that would be, we'd be able to ensure that and repair it appropriately with a warranty product at that point. Um, and I've gotten a few different estimates back with our sports facility. Um, there's a lot of range in that, uh, materials alone for one size is about fifty-two to fifty-seven thousand in just metal. Um, so I'm, I'm continuing to gather information on that and I'll push, I'll push that out as I get it to Mr. Hopkins so he can share it with you.
And then we will be together as a facility, we can kind of go through that, but we really need some more information, you know?
Yeah, we're.
To look at rather than just.
It's, it's trickling in, um, but they, they don't get to me as quickly as I would like, as that tends to be the way. That's, yeah, but. Yeah, absolutely. But those are the key things that I wanted to mention and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions. Yeah, absolutely. But those are the key things that I wanted to mention and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
If you would, uh, kind of cover for them, uh, what you and Mr. Bryant talked about, uh, you know, Jeff with Snyder and what, what to expect, just a, a little overview of what to expect from March, the work.
Okay. Yes, um, as we've been, uh, having our discussions with Snyder, um, they will come in and present to us their plan, uh, for us to consider entering into a contract, uh, which would then entail them taking over part of our infrastructure. Um, so they would make a substantial investment in the schools, primarily in HVAC, air conditioning and heating, um, lighting, things of that nature. These are things that we budget for each year, but they're also big needs for the system. There are big capital needs that we have. And there are things that we have, uh, over the course of the, I've only been involved in this end of it last year and this year. But I know there are things that we have pushed down the road in an effort to take care of the more pressing needs. Um, and they're gonna present to us solutions that maybe would be beneficial to us and help us take care of those things in a much more timely and efficient manner, using their vast resources as an international, you know, corporations, um, that will be coming in.
No cost to us.
No cost, uh, the, the, no cost upfront, no payments of any kind, from my understanding, until we've had, you know, multiple years of savings. And then the costs, um, it sounds, you know, it sounds too good to be true, but, um, as they reiterate over and over again, uh, there should be no cost and any cost that we do incur down the road would be taken out of the savings that we have from saving money on our power. Uh, power and resources, so.
Do you know other schools, other systems that are?
Green, Green County, they're, they're big into it. Wayne is involved. Uh, he keeps talking about Green is like being really big into it and they do, uh, they even do some stuff with their STEM programs and things like that. So there, and then in Alabama, there's a, there's a number, um, of systems that are doing this.
Southeast, they haven't reached so much here.
Green, Green, well, Tennessee?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Yeah, they've got, I guess, I think it was six or seven, uh, Tennessee systems that they've worked with, that we looked at and checked as references. But, uh, I, I do have some packets that I want to.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, and it's, it still seems really outstandingly good. I haven't found the, there's gotta be a catch. You know, I haven't found it yet, but, but it seems really outstanding, so. All right. Thank y'all.
Ms. Dotson is not going to do, because she and Ms. Tooten, both, I've excused them, they are presently working on the CLP media plan and they're actually in my office right now. Uh, and they, and I do want to cover as far as their part, uh, she is working, Ms. Dotson, heavily on the Esser two-point-oh, which is our grant that, uh, our, the federal government's giving us. And, uh, that's what we're looking for, is maybe remodel the backside of that gym to create career tech classrooms, uh, a virtual school, and of course, uh, P E locker rooms. But it fits right in. We met with, uh, Bill Byford, uh, Ms. Tooten and Ms. Dotson and myself. And, uh, he felt that that would fit right with what we want to do, because it, again, creates spacing. Uh, it's gonna allow us to create a, a wonderful, uh, career tech center that we need. But now understand, here, here's a little bit that it has to be done in conjunction with this gymnasium. So that one, we can't let that get too far ahead, because we can't remodel that and not have any place for the, you know, basketball players to dress and others, either, so.
Stick a football out there, man.
Well, I'm just saying, but, but you know.
I'm with you, but.
You know, you, you, you can ask Ms. Murdock, you know how these basketball coaches are. They're, they're not as bad as basketball coaches. Anyway, so I've excused them. That's where they are doing that. I'm sorry.
Hello, how are y'all? Good to have y'all. Um, okay, I don't have a whole, whole lot. Uh, just want to let you know, uh, I've been working with Mr. Hopkins. Uh, what, what we are doing right now is I've been gathering all the employees' schedules and salaries, salary schedules and supplements and everything. And we're putting that all together, compiling it into one, hopefully easy, easy to read document. Uh, and we're gonna be looking at that as we start the budget process for next year, which will be later this month. So, uh, I've been working on that. Uh, Ms. Warden and I conducted a survey of our employees who would like to get the, uh, COVID-19 vaccine. So we did the entire staff and it's, uh, people who have close contact with students or are current employees is who we went after. And we talked to, uh, we had some, uh, student teachers that we were able to include in that and some substitute teachers that we were able to include. So we, we ended up surveying two hundred and sixteen employees total, um, and that's everybody. We chased everybody down and made them, made them commit one way or the other. That's right. So, and a hundred and sixteen indicated they did want to get the vaccine and a hundred indicated they did not want to get the vaccine. But they're not locked into that. They can still change their mind if they would like to. Uh, the health department just needed to know a number so they can start to prepare and help us get ready for that process. So that's, been working on that. Uh, and one big thing we're doing right now is at the high school, we're currently reviewing all the transcripts of all the students, making sure that all their credits, all their GPAs are correct, all that, all that stuff. Uh, a lot of it's transfer students that come in, um, you know, going to this new software. And if you think back, you know, we did a different student information system three years in a row, basically. And that data has been massaged a couple of times as it's gone from one database to another one to another one. So we're just doing a double check to make sure everything is exactly what it needs to be. Uh, and so that's what we're, I'm working with Ms. Wright over at the high school with that right now. And, uh, we're going through transcripts to make sure all that's accurate and exactly the way it's supposed to be. Um, of course, still working on the I S data. That's a daily thing I do, uh, checking for membership numbers, which is, is money for the school system and for proper coding, which is also could be money. So, uh, that's something I, I'm really able to stay on top of now. Uh, and so that's, that's been really, really well. And we're getting prepared for testing coming up. Uh, I'm the, the system, uh, district testing coordinator now. I took over from Ms. Dotson. So, uh, they will actually pull all of the student demographic data from E I S into the testing program through Pearson. And, uh, so, uh, making sure all that's exactly right. So, uh, been busy, been a lot of, a lot of things and hanging pictures and lots of, lots of stuff, so.
First of all, uh, I, we thought that the testing fit a little more in line with what Mr. Gibson was doing. So that, that he was able to take us. I want really get.
They do go together, so.
You know, it, it flowed real well, but it is really unbelievable the amount of time. He has literally went over every contract of every employee in Fayetteville City Schools and created a document that, for me, a dumb damn version, because, you know, I don't know, I don't know anything from a historical perspective, obviously, that I, that we can all read, that actually has what everyone makes, what they are, what their supplements are, you, you just name it. It's a wonderful document and I just can't say enough for Mr. Gibson to say that. And in his, his other part-time job is we've asked him to hang pictures. He and Miss Sisk have been out there and they have worked tirelessly to, what I think is a beautiful job.
What a difference walking in the hall though now. I mean, and it's like Bill said today, you know, he said, it used to be like you're walking in a doctor's office when you came in the hall. Now it's, it's great. So anyway, great it is. So anyway, but. So I'm gonna go watch the middle school basketball game tonight. If y'all have any questions though, for a guy? All right. If y'all have anything, let me know. Okay. Thank y'all.
How are you? I'm not as busy as the others. I'm gonna be short and sweet, okay? Uh, we are working on pre-K grant. Met with my pre-K teachers this afternoon. That's due on February twenty-sixth. Right now, we're being told with eighty percent utilization that we will be able to retain our three classrooms and hopefully add our fourth back locally funded. Uh, we will have registration. Our plans are for next week. So be watching our Facebook page, meeting with Sandy tomorrow to get all that, uh, being promoted out there. We did receive a hundred and twenty-nine Chromebooks from the technology grant. We, uh, at first thought it was gonna cost the district about thirty thousand dollars. It ended up that we're gonna be able to get all that reimbursed. So the thirty-two thousand dollars, that will all be reimbursed. I've already submitted all the paperwork for that and hopefully we'll have the money in the next few days. Uh, we do have two student teachers at, uh, Askins. We have one from Martin Methodist College. She's with Annette Wilkerson. And we were able to partner with MTSU. They didn't have anybody in this area to be the coordinating teacher. And so I have gone through the process, a lengthy, quite lengthy process, to get all that paperwork finished. So any student that wants to come to, to Lincoln County, uh, I can, uh, provide those services for them. And we have, uh, uh, she graduated from our Fayetteville City High School, Carrie Staples, is with Tiffany McKee in first grade. And so I get to see her a lot. We're, she's right there next to me and she, uh, growing our own right there. So excited to have her in our building. And, uh, that is all I have tonight. Any questions?
First of all, Ms. Young is also, if you hear some stuff about the Reed three-sixty and those things, uh, she will, I, I'll kind of give you a teaser. She's gonna give some more information on that. She is taking the lead on all that for us. So I'm very pleased that Ms. Young is just gonna do that.
I have a meeting tomorrow with Lisa Coons at one o'clock and, uh, we'll have more information. Right now, the information we're getting is so, uh, mixed. I hate to, uh, tell you one thing and next month come back and tell you something totally different. So I, I'm one that likes to wait till I have all my ducks in a row before I tell you. So I meet with her tomorrow at one o'clock. Uh, she locked herself out of her computer, so she could not send me one. So I sent her a Google Meet and I said, they're easy on your phone. So just get on your phone if you can't do anything else, because she's having tech troubles. But she and I are meeting at one o'clock tomorrow. And so after that, I will have some information to share about what the summer program should look like, what, uh, Reed, Reading three-sixty should look like. And, uh, moving forward, all the things that we as a district can gain from, from that to increase and improve our reading instruction. We've, we've come a long way in the three years I've been here and we just need to continue to make those improvements and make those strides. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Williams. This is Lisa.
I told her, I told her for the very first time that y'all asked her. She has to sing a song, but she's.
I'm not gonna sing a song. I would tell you that. Thank you, thank you. I'm glad to be here. Um, just to give some information, what I've been working on. Joanne Stevens, Scott Stevens, has been wonderful. She comes over about one to two days a week and helps with my training. Um, we're going through the process of payroll, which includes all the reporting. H R, we're in the process of going through all the areas of H R, um, processing A P checks and payments to vendors. We're working with the general ledger reporting. We're trying to figure out what's the best reports that we need to pull from the system to, to get the information that we're needing. Uh, we're working on doing the monthly retirement, uh, accounts receivable, which includes cash receipts. The federal grants reporting, drawing down on funds and just doing the monthly reports. And with Cindy Young's help, we've uploaded the, um, teacher salaries into Ten Compass. We've got that completed for the year. And for February, we'll be beginning the budget process and then can continue training. And also tomorrow, um, we'll have a conference call with, um, a person from the state of Tennessee with.
Mary, yeah.
Mary Andersky. Um, for additional funding for B E P. And so that's tomorrow afternoon to see how we can spend those funds.
Yeah, and what she's talking about there is, I'm sure you keep hearing or you may hear this, and I sent y'all something, that fifty-seven thousand and the two percent and then the four percent. Wow. Uh, I, I, if I could show you my phone, it blows up constantly from different directors and they, they, no one knows really how to spend it and how we're gonna do it. We're hoping to find out tomorrow. I have that, so she's gonna spend a lot of her day, uh, through that conference call. So hopefully we can give you some information on how to do that. And again, I want to commend, uh, Ms. Williams. You're right now, she's training, trying to learn what Lisa does. But the, the value, I think, for us to have a, a chief financial officer as a system that's gonna come in here and for y'all to be able to address some questions. I think it'll help me for sure. And I appreciate, you, you, she's been working really hard.
Have you had to do the five points training? Is five points still insurance? I mean, do we still deal with them?
Um, we, I have been working with them and so we've gone through a little bit of training. And I've got some training set up in March with, uh, software next gen that's gonna really get into, they want to give me a couple of months to get in so I can figure out what questions I needed to ask and, you know, to walk me through. And that's for like a couple of days, half days in March.
And on February the ninth, she and I are going to do a virtual conference, uh, that, for the new, she's gonna join me at the new superintendent's academy, uh, virtually, uh, where they go over the complete budget and the B E, B E P process and all that. So she will be trained, but just like I am at that time on the Tennessee side. I'm excited. She's gonna join me with that.
No seventy years won't hurt.
Especially ones that can comprehend.
And that's about it. I'm still just training and when Joanne comes in, I just stay right there with her. Afraid she won't come back, but she's been great. She has been just absolutely wonderful. I can't say enough about her. So that's about it. Any questions? Okay, thank you, thank you. Glad to be here. Thank you.
So welcome. This is an important moment.
He was trying to scare me today, so.
She come in and you, you, you think for me, I'd try to comfort him. No, y'all know me. I'm goat there the whole time.
So counting standards and all that don't, I mean, they are what they are. I get that. But school budgets are just sort of different, right? The way the funding flows and everything. It's, there's just a lot to learn.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't pretend to understand it all. I know it's very complex.
Yeah, it is. And everybody, the staff has been great to help me and so, you know, maybe we can all figure it out. So. Okay, great. Thank you.
We got two bankers here, you know. They loaned us some money.
That's right. That's true. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we move on to committee reports, uh, facility transportation.
Committee. Eric, did you have anything that, for the facilities and transportation? I mean.
Nothing. This was the part where I was gonna talk about how awesome Snyder sounded. But I, I have been there, so I have nothing additional unless you guys have questions.
Just work to do in the weeks and months.
It is. But let me just say, that is, uh, it is a monster. Uh, we're gonna have something that we can get as far as, uh, for y'all to, as we can get together. But right now, I just think it's not, we really need to get, uh, estimates and, and I, I, you know, our, our main thing is that gym. And so until we can get that, everything kind of centers around that. Uh, and then when we get that construction management group, they will, uh, we'll, we'll milk them for a lot of, uh, extra help in that area, I, I think.
So the March first, is it March first? Is we're gonna have a work session for?
Snyder, that is, that's just a Snyder thing. Uh, and, uh, transportation, to, give them a little, what are we doing buses? You know, we've had the Eddie's out. We got two bus drivers out.
We currently have two bus drivers who are out with back injuries of various types. Uh, Eddie's had a surgery. Um, Johnny Senior has had an incident where he fell off a ladder and was injured. Uh, he's, we're hoping to get him back maybe next week. Um, but we've had to double up, um, and spread some of the routes. So what we've done is most of the time we take fast, double it with fourteen. Uh, then Jeff drives Eddie's. Um, Daniel Henderson's driving a morning route, which he traditionally does not do. Um, but we, there have been times one another, bus drivers out and we're actually doubling eight, the bus route for eighteen and eleven, um, and doing the other things in addition to that. So we're, we're managing. It's daunting and I can't say enough good things about, uh, how cooperative the drivers have been and that the schools have been so patient and gracious to organize and get the kids ready, um, and help communicate to families and just everybody. It's been a good team effort.
Mr. Jones can solve a real excuse. I mean, you know, the puzzle's unbelievable, I'd say. And with that being said, he also contacted me this morning at five o'clock. Let me know that there was no snow.
Mr. Hopkins was gracious at that early.
All right, I know we got one finance, uh, sent out, we got a line item number two, the general education fund for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Uh, I know that's been sent out, it's like twenty-eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which is from one, which I've gone from travel to health equipment based on this year to use the money. So, uh, I made the motion to approve, uh, the line item amendment number two. I'm saying any discussion, everybody good. All those are favored? All voters? All right. Uh, thank you. Insurance and policy, do we have anything?
We are meeting next week at four-thirty.
And, and they have tried to meet?
Yeah.
The weather has not been cooperative on the dates that they've scheduled to meet, so.
So next Thursday, four-thirty.
But with that being said, Ms. Dotson, who's also facilitating that, has went over those policies with the administrators and others and got them involved. So, uh, I've been very pleased with the engagement that, been involved.
That is.
It, it does. All right.
How are you? How are, how are, Mr. Hopkins, you're, you're up.
Megan Hall, are you out there?
Yes, I am. I know, everybody was dreading me coming in here. Please don't bring that document in here. Um, okay, for those of you that don't know me, my name's Megan. I'm your school nutrition director. Uh, some of y'all have been around, I know lots to games and other things. And I've seen me in FPU line paying my bills. I usually don't come to these things. However, just so y'all know, I am more than happy to answer any questions you have about my department. You know, either let Mr. Hopkins know, send me an email, shoot me a text, whatever, you know. We don't normally have a whole lot go, well, okay, I take that back. We do have a whole lot going on, but there's usually a lot of other things I know that, I guess, you know, the school board usually kind of is concerned with. So, that being said, those of you that have been with our system know the nutrition department is in a little buying group called VAALCO. We formed this group several, several years ago, way before I was ever around, to basically have a lot of buying power. When we process our commodities, it gives us better pricing and so forth. Um, VAALCO has been great. Don't, you know, please don't understand that something's going on. VAALCO has been great. However, uh, recently we were approached by a food service management company. Um, there are other systems out there that have food service management companies and are doing fairly well, from my understanding. And they really are a good resource to have. I will say that. Um, I've had to do a lot of Googling on some of them and phone calling and saying, hey, what do you think? What's going on? Tell me more about this. Um, there's a lot of misconceptions out there. And I'll say on an employee end, one of the big misconceptions you hear is, oh, the food service company comes in and they fire all the employees. That is absolutely not true. Um, anything?
Add it to the company.
Okay, yes. Yes, that's something I was gonna mention here in a minute that I've put in there, right. Um, so if, if that's something you've heard, the employees have either left on their own accord or there was another reason. That is, the company does not come in and say, we don't want you, you're gone. Um, they have a lot of resources that my department is not able to get simply due to financial reasons. Um, they have a lot of resources that my department is not able to get simply due to financial reasons or, you know, sometimes it's who you know type of thing. So, um, they're, they're a big bonus. We, Mr. Hopkins and myself, you know, we discuss it and we think it would be very beneficial for us to leave VAALCO. Therefore, I know you can see on your agenda, um, I apologize, I don't know how it's worded. The board needs to adopt something and say, yes, you know, we approve or whatever. I don't know how y'all do that.
We have let them know in plenty of time that that was our intent. Oh, I'll just say this for the record, a little disappointed that they didn't try to come after us.
Well.
Did they, now? Okay.
I got the end of that, not you.
Okay, anyway, but I'm just saying, I would think that they would've been one of our business. You, you, you know, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm used to being recruited. Not, or not, but you know, you know, they'd be our, uh, but anyway.
Uh, they were, we did send them a letter because, um, right now, we may be in the middle of the school year. We are already working on things for twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Like, we're already saying, hey Tyson, we wanna look at this, you know, chicken patty or whatever. They have to know who all is involved that's going to be buying. So therefore, we had to let, you know, VAALCO know, hey, you know, you're only bidding on these school systems. Feval City will not be with us anymore. Uh, if you, according to VAALCO bylaws, if you do not let them know in a certain amount of time, you know, there essentially could be legal action because that could potentially cost them money. We did send them a letter of intent that Mr. Hopkins signed that, you know, and it did state, we are taking this before our board. At the time, there was a lot of COVID things going on. I think several of y'all may have, you know, not been present, so we felt it was best to, you know, kind of hold off and wait. Uh, so the letter of intent has been sent and, you know, unfortunately, they, well, they didn't come at me, I guess. But, you know, they were, they were not extremely happy. We're not a big system, no, but, you know, I get along great with a lot of them. You know, we bounce ideas off, things like that, um, you know. So I've had several of them say, well, you know, you can still call me and so forth.
So what's our, what, then what is the direct, what direction are we going?
With the food service management company, provided y'all adopt the, what is it called? I apologize.
Resolution.
Yes, the resolution, thank you, for us to officially leave VAALCO.
Okay, then we will, uh, have an RFP.
Yes.
Which looks like they're, we'll bid for us and, and we will.
Yes, this is what was sent to y'all that I had Sandy make sure and let y'all know that it was a draft. It is a hundred and twenty-page document that I've been working on. It does not contain the information, um, such as like I have to include a twenty-one day menu. I have to include the commodities that we got this last year. It does not include that information yet. If that is something y'all would like to see when it's done, I have no problem with that. Um, it's just information I'm still collecting. I had to get with Lisa about employee salaries because they have to, well, they don't have to know, but they wanna know, you know, how much you pay, paying your employees, which, as Mr. Hopkins stated, really kind of doesn't affect them because we have decided to keep our employees. The employees that we currently have will still be Feval City employees. Um, however, I think we did decide that if anyone chooses to leave, again, that's of their own accord, the new hirees will be under the food service management company. They do offer insurance, but if we moved our employees now, they would be having to switch insurance. And I'm sure a lot of y'all know that's really horrible. I had, I actually had two or three that contacted me when they kind of heard word get out and they were like, you know, I have to go to Vanderbilt. Vanderbilt only takes certain types of, you know, insurance and, and they're like terrified to death. So I had to assure them, look, you know, nothing's set in stone. Besides, we are not, you know, pushing y'all out the door, onto them. Y'all are still with us, you know, whatever.
We wanna make sure that we have the best possible package for our employees, uh, which right now, they feel most comfortable with us.
Right.
I think that's the best, but we would never.
Hang them out to dry.
From doing something we felt was better for them, if they wanted to go to that company, I don't think that they would.
Right. Well, again, that's a big misconception with these companies is everybody assumes they come in with all their employees and take over. And that really is not the case. They do bring in, um, I, they do have a full-time, um, I guess you could say manager that would basically like be under me between the cafeteria managers. They would kind of, you know, be around the day-to-day things, you know, things like that. Um, however, they still, you know, answer to us. Um, so they do not come in and literally take everything over. We are still in charge. It is still, nothing gets done without our, okay. They wanna change chicken to beef on the menu, they can't unless we okay it. Um, all that is wrote in here. They, uh, they are responsible for any equipment they bring in, that does not fall on us. They are responsible for providing insurance for their manager that will be their employee. They're responsible for his pay, they're responsible for his insurance, his vehicle insurance, his travel. They are responsible for all the food cost. It's what's called a fixed cost, we will be charged. You know, we serve just say five hundred thousand meals in a month. They're gonna say, okay, we're charging you two dollars and fifty cents per meal. That that we pay covers their management fee, their insurance for their employee, the food cost, the equipment cost, anything else in that one little cost. And their fee cannot be above what the USDA reimbursement rate is.
Which makes it.
Which is three dollars and seventy-nine cents at the moment. Um, they are not allowed to touch any USDA money that automatically comes to us. Uh, I'm trying to think of anything, uh, um.
But expense-wise, revenue-wise, it's neutral.
It, 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 and worse for us, it's neutral. We think it could be budget positive, that, that's our, that is our mission. They, they think so, but I would never again get, wanna promise that, but I would never engage in, want us to engage in anything that would at least be budget neutral.
Right, we wouldn't, uh, knowingly, you know, go into something if we believe that, you know, it wasn't gonna benefit us.
Yes, we think that it could, we, we could benefit monetarily from this, this, our intent.
Right, yes, um, it is wrote in there. Uh, I, I don't hope it's worded correctly and this, as well as, you know, just similar to the other RFP I heard y'all discussing earlier, has to be sent to the state. State has to approve it, then it has to come back. So, you know, nothing's gonna be done illegally, you know, to have come back on us. Um, it is in there that they have to, uh, give us, I believe it is a ten percent, I guess what you would call a deposit of good faith as to what they believe they will be making off of us type of thing, if that makes sense. I don't know if it does, I don't know if I said that right. Um, so we, we do honestly, you know, think it will benefit us. I am slightly concerned because of the timing only with COVID. COVID has just affected every nutrition department really, really bad, like it has every school system. We've done better than I thought, you know? Um, luckily, you know, our, um, precaution plans that we've had in place, I mean, yes, you know, we're doing some remote Wednesdays and yes, we have to have people quarantined occasionally, but our system primarily has been able to stay open, which has really benefited us. So, um, I, I do think it'd be a good move. It would not start at all until July one of twenty twenty-one. We would not do a mid-year thing to upset, you know, anything like that. Um, so am I having questions?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
One of our, one of your employees quits after we're with this company. And they hired the person to come in and take their place, right?
Only if we want it.
Yes, we still have.
They gotta have an employee.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if we decided that, uh, we'd rather have the employee be ours, we wouldn't have to make that, but yes, they wouldn't, we would get another employee, yes.
Right, yes, the position would be.
If they hired one, who disciplines that employee if there's a problem?
Um, if the employee technically is theirs, then technically they do. But again, it's, it's our final say-so. And, and that is also wrote in here. If it's a thing where we believe your employee is not doing what they should do, you're either going to do, you know, what we feel you need to do or we can essentially null and void this contract. Um, so it.
We get final, uh.
Right.
Approval and non-approval on all employees.
We have control.
We have control. That, that, and you're, that's a great question, 'cause that is huge to us in any system where we wanna be able to hire our own people or either have control of who we work.
Right, and, uh, even before they hire another employee, I mean, that employee still kind of interviews with us, I guess, you know. We still have to say yes, because they may put out an ad in El Valley Times and Joe Schmo down the street, you know, may come and apply. Well, it may be something, you know how small Feval is, we know. And it's like, no, we kind of know that person really shouldn't be representing Feval City. We have the say-so to say, no, we don't want that employee. Whether you're paying him or we're paying him, we don't want that employee.
So when do you go and, within the approval?
If you have any more question for her, but before she leaves, I wanna say, y'all, y'all sent a great job. Hundreds on our cafeteria stuff, so our people are doing a great job.
Oh, and the one ninety-nine, by the way, was not a cafeteria thing, that was a maintenance thing. Me and Sandy were laughing about that. I was like, can we put in there that that wasn't a cafeteria issue? That was a broke, it was a broken tile or something, you know. I mean, I know maintenance does their job, something they're getting to and it's like the one day the health man comes, you know, they hadn't made it yet, so, uh, yeah. My ladies were like, don't put that out there, we didn't make a hundred. I'm like, a ninety-nine in COVID times is really good. I was like, come on, we gotta be proud of that.
So very proud of you and your staff, that, that's great.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about this? I actually figured y'all would have like tons of questions. I know I did when I first started, you know, looking at all this, I was like, I wanna know this, 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 this.
There's no, I, we're sort of getting the cart a little bit before the horse here. I, should, can I go ahead and make a motion that we approve this resolution to withdraw from VAALCO? Uh, is that, that's really the order?
Yes, yes, that is, that is the main concern tonight.
But I would make the motion that we approve that resolution.
Okay, motion's approved, resolution's withdrawn.
Second.
Second, any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
So then my question, one question is, you know, we're small and begin with COVID or, or anything really, you know, to reduce our numbers, are there some thresholds that we could get so small that this, that a food service company might say, hey, y'all are just not worth it? We're gonna bail on you.
Um.
At which point you're cooking biscuits.
I will be honest, you know, th- there's always that thing there. I mean, you know, we could get into this and two years down the road, us be like, you know, this is really not what we wanted. We can always go back with VAALCO, again, we just have to, you know, let them know and say, hey, we're, we wanna come back starting this next year. There would be a little time lapse. We could choose to completely be on our own if we so choose to. That would just be us putting out the actual food bids to every individual vi- vi- vendor. Um, I don't know, food service companies right now are kind of hurting themselves because of COVID. So I feel like they're kind of, and that could be one reason they kind of reach to us, I don't know. I feel like they're kind of saying, hey, let's try to get whatever we can so that when things open back up, we're, you know, if we can help them right now, then maybe once things open back up and get to going like it was, you know, we're all, you know, kind of doing good and everything then. I don't feel like, they already know we're a small school system. I don't feel like they would come in and go, oh, you know what? Y'all are smaller than we thought, we're out.
The food service company that went, that approached us first is the food service company for a system very close to us and, and it's, they would benefit because we're so close.
It would almost make like a buying group, so to say.
We're just basically another school, to them, we're just.
Right.
They don't, they, they don't care, we're just another school right here close. But it's a very good benefit to us, it looks like, you know. I, you know, I've been wrong one time.
But the nature of the RFP is that others will have opportunities to.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We were actually, um, and y'all may not know this, so I may be throwing something out there I shouldn't say. We were actually approached about three years ago by a food service company, um, not the one working close to us, but another one. Um, again, there was the big misconception of they were gonna take over the employees and Feval City wouldn't have no say-so, so it was kind of turned down. Um, yeah, right, I, I kind of thought it was a good idea at the time because at the time, things were going really good. And I thought if things are going good for our department, all they can do is better based on what I had seen and read and people I had talked to. Um, I guess that just wasn't the right time for us, though. Um, I do feel, again, you know, I do feel like this is a good move. Um, I'm not about, you know, fixing a wheel that's not broke, but I'm all about change. If you stop learning and you stop trying, you kind of start dying. And that's the last thing I want, you know, for our system, my department. I don't want it to just, you know, be there. They can, again, bring in resources that I, I don't have the capability to get that I feel will really benefit our system.
I'm excited about the menus. I mean, they, they should be very good stuff. Thank you, great job.
All right, anything else for me?
Good luck.
Oh, thank you, I think I'm gonna go meet my husband for supper now. Thank you.
All right. Uh, the next part there is, you know, it's the academic account, y'all looked at it, went through the committee like it did last, I could, y'all have historically done, the faculty and staff looked at it, voted on it when this was the option.
Then we need to approve it. Uh, I just have one question, are we gonna stagger? I know the staggering at the beginning of the year worked out real well for the teachers.
It is our intent to probably do that, yes.
I mean, I, I heard so many, so many compliments that, man, that was awesome.
Well, yes, it does, our intent to do that, that may be one of the best things we've ever done, so yes.
No, really, I, I just wanted to ask some questions, so. I got your motion to approve the calendar for next year?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it's approved. Go ahead.
The next is personnel, you know, Miss Doobin, geez, that's just horrible. I hate to lose her, her health and she has really struggled with the COVID and, uh, so she has. But I, I will say that, uh, our finest department has worked very well with her to get her some help that she's had and she actually, I, I won't go into, you know, they, they.
She's, she's, she's great.
She's great, she is, she's been.
She's my first grad student.
She's been very nice to me since I've been here too.
A long time ago. She was a graduate of, she was close to y'all.
I don't know, she, she might.
I'm only practicing.
She might be.
She was Travis's first grad student.
She might be, she was right there, and she was in our class, she was right there. I get, I bring her up, I put out all my.
She's a good one.
Do we need to approve?
We need to vote on it because she is a tenured employee, so you need to vote to accept that.
Your motion to, uh, your motion, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Send her our regards, please.
Absolutely. And, and I, I've talked to her a few times. Uh, next is just a reminder of learning Wednesdays, uh, for February, March. We hope to maybe, but that time, you just don't know, a lot of us can depend on, I, I think, the, uh, vaccine, but I, I make no comments one way or the other, other than I'm, that really, I was surprised at the number of, uh, I was surprised at, at our numbers. Let me put that way, the, the survey did not go as I would've put money on.
That was interesting.
It was interesting, so yeah, that's a good way of putting it. So, uh, all right, and then the other part is, uh, I have the, the fifty-seven thousand, just remember that's, you, you may be hearing a lot of things about that. Uh, we are getting a lot of misinformation, uh, multiple information on how we can spend that. Uh, but I want the board to know that it is my intent that, you may have some people that are a support staff or some others that get asked questions. We want to apply this evenly to all Feval City employees, which is what y'all have historically always done. And it is my intent to make sure that happens too. We've just gotta be creative in how we do this, so.
Find out how you can be creative.
That, that's right, but, but, but there may be people when they go, well, they just said it's gonna be like, you're right, but we're gonna do whatever it takes, and I may have to make the finance committee or whatever, but we're gonna do what we've always done. I, I just want you to know, that's my commitment to that. Uh, then the March first, uh, work session.
Okay, March, four o'clock.
Four, is that, four o'clock? I told you to keep it to thirty minutes, but I mean, I, I just said four o'clock.